All right, I'd like to call to order the Warmester Township Board of Supervisors Meeting for Thursday, January 17th, 2019. Let everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Monroe, will you please lead us?
I'd like to lead.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a moment of silence for the men and women who are protecting us both home and overseas? All right, we're gonna get, start off with supervisor announcements before I go to Ms. Monroe. I do want to announce that there was an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of litigation. All right, Mr. Monroe?
None this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Frescatore?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have some announcements on behalf of our Parks and Rec Department. Don't miss out on craft programs with Ms. Kathy. Kids one-day workshop for ages three to six. Next class is February 12th from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. Fee is $12 a class. Munchkin time for preschoolers ages two and three with adult helper. Next class is Wednesday, February 13th from 10 to 11. Fee is $9 per class. Discount tickets are available for regal, ski lift tickets, flower show tickets. They have ski tickets for various mountain resorts. Tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Parks and Rec office at Warmester Community Park. Tickets for the wine and cheese designer bag bingo are on sale now at the township website or in the Park and Rec office. They're $40 a person, includes wine, beer, finger food, and food buffet. 2019 dog licenses and Bark Park membership are available now at the Warmester Community Park. Friends of Warmester Park Casino Nights, the biggest fundraising event we have, is on Saturday, March 23rd at Ann's Choice. We're selling tickets throughout the next three months. The $35 tickets include beef and beer, $50 in chips, gaming table raffles, and silent auction items. One of the silent auction items is an Alaskan cruise and a safari in Africa. So any information you want on any of these items, please contact.
And one of the other silent auction items is a weekend at my lovely place in North Wildwood, too, so.
All right, thank you, Mark.
It's a good item.
So contact Parks and Rec office at (215) 443-5428, or visit the township website. Thank you, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Frescatore. Mr. McKee?
Yes, I just have one announcement, Mr. Chairman. Coming up February the 8th at the Ben Wilson Center at 6:30 PM is the Warmester Rotary Club's annual Coach Bag Bingo Evening. We have three major fundraisers a year, and this is one of the big ones. It includes 12 games of bingo, food and beverages, wine and beer. Tim Hagy's here, he's one of your waiters. Nora Fennello is the barmaid. Judge Dan Fennello is the emcee for the evening. It's a heck of a lot of fun, it really is, and it's a great fundraiser for the Rotary Club. It's $30 per person in advance at warminstorotary.org, or it's $35 at the door. We still have tickets available, so please do come out, guys and gals. We get some guys come out to it, too, and we're always looking for volunteers if someone wants, is interested in joining the Rotary Club or volunteering for the evening. It's a terrific night, and I know I hit on this all year long with the Rotary Club. We donate to local families and local, we do a scholarship every year for the high schools, and we donate to the local families and people of need all year round. So please come out and support the event, and we look forward to seeing you there. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. Mr. McPhillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to remind everyone, if you have any unwanted or unused prescription medications, you can safely get rid of them over at the Warmester Police Department. It's the green box at the top of the steps. And unfortunately, as you can tell by the news, that this heroin epidemic that's facing our township, our state, our country for that matter, isn't going away anytime soon. And the best thing you can do is to get rid of your prescription medications, because we know that over 80% of the people who abuse heroin start off by abusing painkillers. So please, drop off your unwanted, unused prescription medications. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McPhillips. Before we get into our land use matters, I'd like to announce new businesses that have come to town since December 21st. We have the OSCO Group, which is a car repair shop at 395 Jacksonville Road. We have Replay Toys, which I think just moved down the center a little bit. It's used toys in a toy consignment shop at 1523 West Street Road. That's the Warmester Square Shopping Center. We have Doylestown Health Physicians opened up at 201 Veterans Way. Christianson Builders, which is a construction company at 340 Constance Drive, Unit Number Three. And last but certainly not least, today Steak 'n Shake, 380 West Street Road, finally open for business. They are having their grand opening this Saturday, I think at noon. I think the new state senator's gonna be cutting the ribbon. Everyone's welcome, I'm sure. We welcome all of these businesses to town and wish them the best, and thank them for calling Warmester home. With that, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, that's land use matters, public hearings and ordinances. Our first one is considering adoption of Ordinance 753, which is amending the Township Code to grant stormwater management abilities to the Warmester Municipal Authority. I'm going to turn the floor over now to our solicitor, Mr. Erkman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I had a wince on the mind, I apologize.
That's fine, everybody does. As you referenced, the ordinance is 753, it's the first ordinance on the agenda. No public hearing is required because it's not zoning or salvo, but I'll give a brief description, and certainly we can answer any questions that the board or the public has. This is an ordinance which amends the Township Code as it relates to the municipal authority. What this ordinance does is it gives the authority the right to manage stormwater in the township. This is part of an ongoing process where, like a lot of municipalities in the state, we're trying to figure a way to manage stormwater in a method by which we're able to meet the MS4 requirements from the state. So this is an ordinance that doesn't give them the ability to do that yet. That'll be handled in the future with an agreement with the authority, but it simply amends the Township Code so that after we reach that agreement, we'll be able to have that right. So with that being said, I will very briefly read the legal description that was read. This is an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the Warmester Township, amending Chapter One, Part Three, Section 1303 and 1304 of the Warmester Township Code to give the Warmester Township Municipal Authority the power to and be for the purpose of stormwater planning, management, and implementation. And again, like I said, this doesn't give them the right to do that yet, that'll be handled in the future, but it amends the code so that we can do that at that time. So if there's any questions from the board?
Open up to the board. Any questions from the public? Okay, what's our next step?
Well, at this point, I guess the Chair can entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 753 as it's been presented.
Is there a motion?
Simmed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional comment for the board?
I just have one, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the authority for taking this. This is a huge responsibility the Authority Board has taken on, and just want to thank them on behalf of the board.
Thank you, sir. Any comment or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Chair votes aye, Carrie's 5-0.
Thank you very much. Second, and this is a zoning ordinance amendment, so everybody will notice that there is a court reporter in the room tonight. So we're gonna move into the public hearing portion of this ordinance, which is required by law. This is an ordinance 751, proposing to amend the township's zoning ordinance by adding a new overlay district entitled RC Retirement Community Overlay to three properties identified as Bucks County Tax Map parcel numbers 49009059, 49009060, and 49009061 within the township's R2 Residence District. This hearing was advertised on Thursday, January 3rd, 2019, and Thursday, January 10th, 2019, in accordance with applicable law. The legal notice reads as follows. On January 17th, 2019, after 8 o'clock PM, the Warmester Township Board of Supervisors during its regularly scheduled meeting will conduct a public hearing to consider enactment of the following. An ordinance amending the township's zoning ordinance by: One, adding a new Part 10A entitled RC Retirement Community Overlay. Number Two, adding the RE Retirement Community Overlay to Part Three, Section 27301, Classes of Districts. And Three, adding the RE Retirement Community Overlay to the zoning map as incorporated into the township's zoning ordinance under Part Three, Section 27302, and applying it to three properties identified as Bucks County Tax Map parcel numbers, and then it's the numbers that I already read. The full text of the ordinance can be examined without charge at the township building, the Law Library, and the Township Building. With that being said, I'll note that the copies of the proposed ordinance were available at the township newspaper and the Law Library. We now have the Township Land Planner, Judy Goldstein, who's going to give us a brief description of what's being proposed.
Okay. As Eric read into the record, it's a zoning ordinance amendment, and there are two components to it. I'm just going to do this in plain language, as opposed to the legal language that Jeff provided. There's a text amendment, and that text amendment creates the new district, the RC Retirement Community Overlay District, and with that creates district regulations toward that district. The second part is a map amendment, and that is to create the RC Retirement Community Overlay District on the map, and then apply it to those three specific parcels that were referenced. So it's an overlay, only on those parcels on the map, and then the text creates that district and all the regulations that go with it. The important things to note that if the ordinance is adopted, the use Retirement Community would be permitted by right in that district in the overlay. Parcels would be included in the RC Retirement Community Overlay District. The use RC Retirement Community would be permitted by right and would need to include all four components as listed in the ordinance, and that would be independent attached units, independent apartment units, assisted living units, and memory care units. The density, as written in the ordinance, would permit up to 18 dwelling units per acre of gross tract area, with no more than 25% of the units being independent attached units. The area and dimensional requirements would permit essentially what the applicant is proposing on their current plan. The applicant would still need to comply, or the applicant or anyone coming in on those three parcels to utilize this district would need to comply with the ordinance, including the special requirements for Retirement Community, which are spelled out in Section 1009, which are the age restriction and all the specifics. It should be noted that the Retirement Community use and district would be generally consistent with the 2018 comprehensive plan that was just recently adopted. Specifically, those parcels are shown as institutional in your comprehensive plan, and this use would be consistent with that. It would also be consistent with supporting infill development, adaptive reuse, and redevelopment efforts consistent with the existing community character. That's one of the goals and objectives. A second goal and objective that it would support would be revising local codes to encourage appropriate and flexible design options. And the third goal or objective it would support from the comp plan would be encouraging a diversity of housing unit and types to meet the needs of current and future residents. And just one of the more important things, overlays are not often understood by the general public, but an overlay means that it's an extra layer or extra option overlaid on those existing zoning parcels. So those parcels would retain their existing zoning of R2 and could be developed as R2 residential. However, if the owner or applicant for those three parcels in which the overlay is applied would opt to use the Retirement Community use, they would have the right to do it and would need to come in with land development, but if they comply with the ordinance, it is a use by right. That's the summary.
Thank you, Judy.
That was a short version, believe it or not.
Good explanation, Judy.
I'd just like to point out one thing. My notes were incorrect, and I did confirm that the right information was advertised. The advertisement referenced the meeting starting at 7 o'clock, not 8 o'clock, which is what I said before. So, thank you, Judy. I will now mark the following exhibits for the board. B1, which is the proposed ordinance amendment itself. B2, which is the legal notice. B3 is the proof of publication. B4 is the proof of property posting. B5 is the proof of notification to real estate tax bill addresses. B6 is the November 28th, 2018 Bucks County Law Library Letter. B7 is the December 3rd, 2018 Township Planner Review Letter. B8 is the January 2nd, 2019 Bucks County Planning Commission Review Letter. B9 is the January 9th, 2019 Township County Planning Commission Review Letter. With that said, I believe that the applicants themselves are here, and I'm not sure if you'd like to make a presentation or just address questions from the board.
What I thought I would do, and I'm Ed Murphy, to my right is Kevin Riley of County Builders. I thought I would just quickly summarize the journey we've been on for just about a year now. Last February, County Builders purchased the property, which is the subject of our discussion tonight, and within a couple of months, they entered into an agreement to sell a portion of it to Catus, which is the lightyear user that is part of our application. We first met with the Township staff.
Excuse me, I don't think your mic is on. Can you hold it a little closer?
Sure. We first met with the Township staff last May to introduce our concept plan to the staff to gauge their reaction to it, and when the staff reaction was positive, they recommended that we present that same initial sketch to this body to gauge their reaction before we got too far ahead of ourselves, because we knew that in order to implement the plan that is on the table this evening as a companion to the ordinance, that certain adjustments to the current zoning ordinance would be required. So we met first after the staff, we met first with your EDC. They also gave us an endorsement, and then we met with this board last July, right after Labor Day. You then directed all of us, your staff included, to work on the ordinance that is now in front of you. So we've spent almost six months or more working on the ordinance. We did a draft, submitted to staff, they made some recommendations, including moving the Catus building, as we refer to it, further away from the edge of the Route 263 right-of-way. We reduced the density in the residential townhomes, created more open space to the rear, and then we went back again to revise the ordinance to incorporate those changes that had been requested. We then met twice with your Planning Commission to go over the sketch plan and then the ordinance, most recently in December, and then we're here tonight. So this is, I think, between the staff meetings, meetings with the Planning Commission, Economic Development Committee, and this body. We've had eight meetings since last May to talk about what's now in front of you, and we think we're at a point now, as both Eric and summarized from you, that we're at a point where we think the ordinance is aligned with the plan that we want to move forward with, and we're anxious and hopeful that you guys feel the same way, and that you would now move ahead and adopt the ordinance to enable us to work on our land development plan. So this is not the end of the process. We still have to go through your normal land development process, submitting detailed engineering plans, meeting further with the Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors. So we've got work ahead of us, and we'll be back in front of everybody in the coming months, but hopefully we see an end to that process sometime this summer or so, so we can finally move ahead. So that's where we've been, and that's where we are tonight. And yes, Eric, we're happy, we have representatives here besides Kevin, we have representatives here from Catus if anybody has any questions about any specific aspect of the plan.
So along those lines, are there any questions from the board?
I have some questions. Can we ask about the plan itself?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, hi Kevin. We, I liked, the initial plan that we originally saw a while ago was parking in the front of the building, and then the building was sitting back further. Do you remember that particular plan? It was a while ago.
The first plan that we brought in was this plan with the building actually closer to the road.
But wasn't there talk about having the parking like in the front at one point, and then the building sitting back further?
I think you proposed that, you showed that to the zoning officer. I think it wasn't formal. I think there is a sketch floating around that.
Perhaps that was a previous potential buyer.
I don't think it's ever been.
No.
It was part of our plan.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that may come from, it may have been misunderstood from the zoning officer then on that.
Okay. Amanda, can you go to the next slide, please?
Okay, so my question, my question was, I understand that the building will be 100 feet from the street, correct?
It will actually be 100 feet from the right-of-way and 125 feet from the existing edge of pavement to the building.
Okay.
And there is a row of parking in front of it as well.
Okay. I first wanted to commend you for making concessions and doing the extensive work on the traffic light, and I believe that it is a development that is greatly needed in our community for 55 and older, so I think it's a great community. My only concern was the frontage. The building is huge, okay? I think it's humongous, actually, and I was thinking that if we had more of the parking in the front and the building was backed up more, that it would blend in more with the landscape of York Road, because it is a really huge building. I was hoping that perhaps maybe you could work with our engineer with a new plan for the big building. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but that was one of my concerns. Of course, the size, the size of the building concerns me. Other than that, one other question, are there any recreational facilities on the site?
There'd be plenty of recreational facilities for the assisted living facility. I believe there's three courtyards internal, there's an outdoor pool, at least one outdoor pool. So yes, there would be, you know, definitely quite a few recreational facilities.
Okay. But other than that, the size of the building and how big it is, and I feel like it sits too close to, it's still gonna be, you drive by, you're just gonna see this huge, huge building. Do you understand where I'm coming from with that?
I understand your concern.
Okay. So that, those are my concerns, and I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome, thank you.
It's not necessarily questions, but yeah, my concern is the, any chance you wanna, because there's four floors, right?
So there are four floors, but only for less than half of the building. The four floors are along the frontage of York Road, so it's four floors for this L shape, the length of York Road, and then the dog leg back to this location is the limit of four floors. The rest of the building is three floors. So where it's adjacent to residential properties, it does drop down to three floors, with along York Road being four floors. That's correct.
All right, so potentially removing the fourth floor wouldn't be quite as substantial undertaking as it would be if it consisted of the entire building?
Well, I think that we've made that concession by knocking the rest of the building down from four floors to three floors already, Brian. I'd love to do it, but our program won't allow it, you know? And we think that we could be, you know, give you a really, really attractive architecture that will, you know, dissuade, you know, actually make it very attractive along York Road. Brand-new, state-of-the-art building, $50 million investment.
Lot of trees.
Lot of trees. Lot of trees.
I know you talked about so far there's eight, and eight meetings, and we're certainly not finished. You have Planning Commission to go to, and then back to this board, and I'd hate to tack on another meeting, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. My concern is with the residents. As we get through the land development phase, would you be willing to have a meeting dedicated for just meeting with the residents?
Sure. That's typically what we would do, Dan, anyway, and I know during earlier staff meetings, staff has inquired the same thing, so certainly we would be pleased to meet with the residents, go over any issues they would have.
Thank you. And I guess the other comment is, the ordinance talked about a six-foot fence. I think we talked with staff before, is it to an eight-foot?
Correct. We've had conversations with staff about that. I think presently, the ordinance permits a maximum height of six. We indicated a willingness to go to eight, and I think there's, I think, a movement to adjust the ordinance to increase the maximum height to eight, so that if we did it, it would be compliant. So yes, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, at this point, the ordinance as it is, as advertised, is what's in front of this board right now, and to modify it, we'd have to take action in the future.
Right. But that's a willingness to comply. If you increase the height, we'll increase the height of the fence.
Thank you.
That's it to Brian and Kathy's questions. So if we adopt this ordinance tonight, this becomes a by-right plan, which means you don't have the opportunity to go back and rework this building as far as setback height or things like that. When we come into land development, you're coming in with a by-right plan, correct?
The goal of the exercise from our very first staff meeting, if we were gonna do this, was to try to establish a plan that was by-right that didn't require any variances. So our intention is to do just that, and we believe when our land development plans, if and when they're submitted, assuming the ordinance gets approved, it will be a compliant plan, and we won't need any variances. That's our goal.
Any other questions on board? All right. Mr. Riley, this isn't County Builders' first rodeo in Warmester. So I just want to make sure.
Second.
It's all good. That we're gonna, when we get to land development process, we have, we'll have a lot of, I'm sure, a lot of interested parties, a lot of questions at that time. I just want to make sure that when we get to land development, we're gonna work as we have in the past in terms of trying to, you know, mitigate the impact on the community through different fees, different other options that we have in front of us when we get to the land development process. Do you foresee it working as it has in the past, where you work with staff and sort of get to that point, so that when we come back, whenever it may be during the land development process, that we have a better idea? Because this is not really the time or place to discuss those items. But I know that many people, because of the developments that we've done with the schools and such, have become much more educated on the process. Are we planning to work in a similar fashion on this project?
We are. We are invested in Warmester Township. I believe this is our fourth project in Warmester Township in the last few years. I think that we've proven to be a good partner, and we want to continue that relationship. So you have my word on that, and I also have been given permission by the folks at Catus that they will work with the township as well to work through those issues.
Terrific.
And in this positive realm, I'm very, I do like the majority of what you've presented here. I do have some minor issues that I think that we need a little bit more time on it. The biggest issue that I have is obviously with doing an overlay. I mean, that's, for the township's perspective, that's a huge playing card, that we, once we turn that card in, we kind of lose it. But the jobs that you're gonna be bringing in with respect to this, I think it's gonna be pretty significant, so I certainly appreciate that for the township and its residents. Another concern that I have is not necessarily towards you guys, but you had a development, and a local architect that was looking at doing development catty corner on a different property. He was denied, he went through the process, had more of a compact number of homes and things of that nature, and that was turned down. And I'm a little concerned if there's gonna be any kind of precedent that would be set by that. I know I brought that up before. I'm talking at the client property. Is there any concern with that? If we do an overlay on this, is he gonna be able to come back to the table and?
No, not at all. I mean, that's more of a legal question, but I understand, Eric doesn't know the history of that, but they proposed something that didn't meet the ordinance, and the township decided not to move forward with that. This project, as I said, was going on for six months or so, so we've been involved, they've taken the temperature, and all along, the board, staff communicated with their professionals. I think that's why it goes this way, there's a lot of communication that, you know, I think you guys are where maybe others aren't, but that was not the case. They submitted a plan, and not everybody agreed with it. everybody agreed with it. They didn't wanna make concessions. And Mr. Riley's right, there's been a lot of concessions, and there will be more as we get into the engineering. This is not engineered yet, the bulk of the planning's done. That other project didn't get into a lot of the engineering, so then they had a lot of more pitfalls along the way, and it got very expensive, and they needed more density to make, make it work for the site improvement. So, I don't see, there's no connection there. That project is approved now. There must have been four or five different sketch plans submitted on that, and it was a difficult site.
I just wanna be getting a phone call next week.
And ultimately, to, to the legal point, you know, this is an overlay that's being applied to three specific parcels. You know, it's a legislative decision by this body, and it doesn't bind for any other parcels that, that aren't in that list, so I, I don't think you have to worry about any kind of precedent being set.
Thank you.
And just, just to follow up on the chairman's comment about, it's not their first rodeo, we have been in contact, even getting to start to look at the, the engineering part of it. There's gonna be waivers, there's gonna be, once they, they do all their studies, dealing with PennDOT's gonna be a huge issue. They've already started that, which we asked too early on, so we know what we're dealing with when PennDOT comes back in. I know it's gonna be costly with the creek there. If you recall, the first plan did not have a second access, that was a big concession. So there's been a lot of give and take, and we'll continue to look at that, and, you know, end up with a, a compromise and, and some concessions on both sides. There will be definitely some waivers that are, that are needed from the submerged land development ordinance, so I made it clear to everybody not to get into that tonight. I know everybody wants to jump into the plan, but I've heard everybody's feedback, I've relayed those to, to Mr. Riley and his staff, and we'll continue at staff level to work on that. Before you, I'd even see the final plan, there'll be a lot, several more changes along the way.
On a positive note, I have been a great partner to Warminster and, and work well, really well with us. I just wanted to voice those concerns with the size of the building, and I think it's, I still believe it's too close, but it isn't something that we do need in Warminster. I just, I just wish that we, there was something we could do with those two issues, and, but I wish you the best.
I'm really lucky. I mean, to be able to come here is one of the few places I'd like to go.
Good.
Brilliant.
Why is that? Because I can sit here, and I can tell you that between the Petrucci projects and the county building projects, there've probably been now upwards of seven-hundred million dollars or more reinvested in Warminster between everything we've done on Jacksonville Road and everything we can come into fund. It's a, it's a privilege to be here, to be able to do that, and we have another opportunity for another forty to fifty million dollars. I mean, it's a huge investment in Warminster.
And, and I've always enjoyed our, our working relationship, particularly with county builders. I know with Mr. Riley and Mr. Meister have invested a tremendous amount off-site in Warminster. We have a project coming up in the park that they're basically paying for the baseball fields, for the sports complex. There's a million-dollar stormwater project that was completed that county builders paid for, not a dime to the taxpayers. And anytime we call and ask them to sponsor Warminster Day, or sponsor a Rotary Charity Ball, they're the first ones to the door saying, "Yeah, we're here." So I, I appreciate your community involvement, I really do.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We'll now open up the podium for questions from the audience. If anybody has any questions, please come up front to the microphone, identify yourself and where you live.
Good evening. My name's Joe Danic. I reside at nine-nine-three Mueller Road. I back right up to this property right there. Couple of questions. Number one, is this the final plan as far as how, for the townhomes you're gonna back up to our houses?
I would say generally, yes, it is. The, the ordinance allows this for the plan, and what we've done from behind your houses is we've actually reduced our townhome unit by talking with staff, knowing the folks back up there. We've moved the townhouses further away from your property. We've, we've added nearly an acre of open space in that area. Have, our, our closest townhouse is about a hundred and thirty feet from the closest rear property line, and we're proposing a fence all along the property, full privacy fence, whether that's six-foot or eight-foot. We'll figure that out in the coming months. But it'll be a minimum of six-foot privacy fence, and we'll plant trees on our side of the property. So those are the things that we're doing. You have my word that we won't move our townhouses closer than they are shown right now.
So approximately a hundred and thirty feet from our homes.
Correct, that's correct. And, and that, that's this, that's this townhome unit here. That's the closest one. And then we have a small parking lot for overflow parking, and then the driveway, the driveway back out to York Road.
And the perimeter, the whole perimeter towards our back will be a fence, is that correct?
Correct. The entire perimeter will get a full six-foot or eight-foot, as Dan asked for, six-foot or eight-foot, all along these property lines.
Okay. You guys will maintain that as well?
Correct, that's correct.
So there'll be no plating on our side, just be on your side?
That's correct.
We do have some drainage issues along the property line there.
Is that this rear property line?
Correct, yes.
Okay. We can easily, I know that there's tons of, of stormwater problems due to the Yorktown condominiums, and condominiums next to them as well. They actually, they don't have any stormwater, they're running right off their property and onto ours. We're gonna capture that stormwater, put it into the basins, and then discharge it out to Ivyland Road, which I know there's flooding problems out on Ivyland Road.
Right, right about where your point is, right there, there's a dry creek that runs through there, if you come back towards the bottom?
Yep, yep. And Christ Homes, discharges all through there, and it all comes, and it comes here. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that in the next few meetings, when we engineer the plans, but we're gonna have stormwater management basins and, and inlets that will capture the stormwater, slow it down, and then, and then discharge at that location. It'll be a marked improvement of what's there now.
Okay, great. All right.
Kevin, can you just point to where the townhouses were? They, that open space in the back, there was another whole row of townhouses, basically going the other way. So, at staff level, we had recommended.
That's the picture I had saw on here.
Yes, and I heard that right away.
Is this with the plan, or is the plan I saw on?
No, this is the plan now. We've already made that concession. We've reduced our townhouses, we've pulled them further away from neighbors to make that concession.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yes. Hi, my name's Greg Idenisi. I'm at nine-eight-nine Mueller Road, actually Joe's neighbor. He asks a lot of questions I have. I'm just, I was a little bit worried about some of the, like, light pollution from the parking lots and stuff like that.
Typically, Craig will review the light standards, our minimum and maximum standards the township has. We always work with the township staff to make sure the lights are shielded down, they're as low profile as Craig would recommend, so there's no glare spilling onto adjacent properties. And Craig will assist on that.
There's only like eight spots back there, so they don't need much lighting. They'll have some building lighting. In fact, I think we could actually probably even reduce the impervious coverage on that, now that I look at that versus the other parking lot in between. There's twelve spots there, so I'd rather have a few more spaces and less impervious, and I'm sure Kevin would agree, but we don't need much lighting back there. So I know you, you're, the residents are back there, we'll try to keep it to.
Okay, so a lot of these questions could be answered when we have another meeting.
That's right.
You'll have several more, probably planning commissions where you wanna discuss that, but we'll get into details.
What Dan recommended, we wanna meet separately outside of the planning commission, we'll do that too.
Okay.
If you wanna see a similar light, you go through the Stone Ridge Estates community on Roberts Road. I just drove through there, there's five streetlights down. They're, they're not, they don't throw much light at all, but that's.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Hello, I'm Kathleen Christian. I live eight-ninety Ivyland Road, and my only concern is the runoff. You mentioned about the hidden creek that comes right down my property. We've been flooded out since nineteen eighty-six at least once a year. My house is like the, it's a moat. And my neighbors cross the street, the water goes through their front doors. Judy Dauter lost a truck. She had to bring in tons of dirt just to make a barrier to save her house. It was going in her kitchen window. Last year, we had a flood, Judy called, they came out to see, looked at drainpipe, and I said, "That's not the problem. It's where the water's coming from. This is where it ends up, on our properties." They're looking at the drainpipe like there's a problem with the pipe. There's not a problem with the pipe. It's all the water that's being funneled right at our house. This is gonna be horrible, even if it's intermittent releases. Where are you releasing it to? There's one drainpipe handling all the water from Warminster. It's coming from the Jehovah Witness Church, goes under York Road, next to St. Andrews, right at my property. It's coming from Mueller Road, down through Joe Senna's property, all those properties, right to my yard, down the side yard, across my front yard, into the one drainpipe. You haven't fixed the problem. You keep redirecting all the water from, look at Christ Home. They redug a ditch there, that water's coming my way too. It's like, how much water to my property hold? There's gotta be another drainpipe that can be put in somewhere that can alleviate my property, 'cause I'm the last address that water hits. I haven't been able to mow most of my property since last March. With all the rain we've had, I can't even walk in my front yard. I can now, 'cause it's frozen. After Sunday, back to a marsh. I couldn't even rake the leaves. I couldn't, I got my tractor stuck. It's been a, like a sponge out there, 'cause the water's just constant.
Is that, is that where the dry creek bed goes through?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I had, a representative came to my house, he wanted to buy my house, and I'm like, "You want me out of my house?" And then he wanted to buy a portion of my back property. I said, "I'm not selling my property to you. I don't really want you there anyway."
I'll, I'll jump a little bit, 'cause I was gonna make a comment at the end. Any of the residents that talked about drainage, and, and I've worked with Kevin as engineer on many other projects, it'll help out a lot if, and if, whether it's a joint meeting or individual, but if everybody talks about and points out to the engineer and the developer where the drainage is going, crossing the properties, they'll work, they'll work with you on that, and then I'll sign off on that. I'm gonna tell you, every project, I, we hear the same thing, and what, what they're gonna do, and I, I don't even need to ask anymore, is they're gonna reduce the runoff more than what's there even required by ordinance. Most of the other developments that we've had, actually, all the developments we've had, the runoff, they're, they're, they have to meet pre-development conditions, but that doesn't solve the problems that you mentioned or your neighbors, 'cause it's already there. So, on all the other school projects, we've gone below what's required. They've held back even more water. I don't know if everybody picked up, but Kevin mentioned there's water coming from adjacent property that they're gonna collect. We had staff meeting this week where that didn't happen on a smaller project. Now they have to redesign it because they didn't look off-site to try to fix the neighbors' properties. All the water, it doesn't follow the property lines, but the earlier that you can get information, all the property owners, of where each drainage problem is, that'll help go a long way for the staff to work with them on trying to put the facilities where they need to be.
This still doesn't answer my question. There's only one, one direction. Where else are they gonna redirect it? Back onto York Road?
It's gonna go the same way. They're gonna hold it back. The water has to go there. The creek's on your property. I assume the woods are all your property. You're gonna see a reduction in the runoff. There's plenty of engineers, you know, there's a couple engineers here and planners. It's hard for you to understand, but all those facilities are being developed, they're actually gonna hold back the water and release it slower, and that'll help with the flooding. Instead of everything coming down your property now. So all the water right now just goes through this property, over from Jehovah's Witness, crosses the road. I know, I'm fully aware. This will help. Now, what we need to do is create larger facilities on their property to hold back some of that. They're, they're not, they're not obligated to hold back all of it.
Is it in the plan? Where is this, where is it in the plan there?
We have not engineered the plan yet, but right now the blue areas are potential stormwater basin locations, the two blue areas.
And we may need to put one in the other open space. I mean, hearing what I'm hearing tonight, there may be need back before your properties, their properties, to catch even more. It hasn't been designed yet. That's why the input earlier on, and I appreciate all this, and I know so does Kevin, we wanna, they wanna engineer it once, put the facilities where they need to go. They have to take care of their development, but in the same time, that's what staff does to try to work with solving some of the, the other smaller drainage problems. The water's still gonna be coming where it always goes. It's just gonna be at a reduced rate, and also the volume will be held back. And I can guarantee you, the other projects, it was the same way. We had a lot of complaints. It didn't solve some of the street flooding, because that's coming from another street, coming from down the road. I understand where you're talking about. There's a lot of water that comes down there. They're not gonna stop.
Now, I wanted to show the workers last year, but they said they're not allowed to walk on personal property. I said, "You're looking at a drain, and that's not the problem. The problem is where it's coming from, all those directions behind my house." Thank you.
Any other questions?
My name is Jeff Ketera, and I happen to be that young lady's husband, and I live at eight-ninety Ivyland Road, which is directly north of this development of yours. I came down to complain about the fact that, as of right now, it's not handling the water that's coming down our creek. And when I say creek, it's only a visible creek for three-hundred feet from Ivyland Road. The rest of it winds through some nowhere land and finishes up at the main street. But anyway, what I'm saying, there's a, I, before I married Kathy and moved in, the, the township attempted to make, or resolve the water problem, and from the front, or northern edge of our property, they laid a four-foot diameter, forty-foot-long pipe that crosses Jacksonville Road. Not at the Jacksonville, Ivyland Road, Ivyland Road. And when it's anywhere near raining a lot, the water fills that pipe up completely. There is a little gap at the top where water's running through it that I can plug up with my finger. So what I'm concerned about is, the water that is now running off the property is just the absolute max of what the heck could go through there. If it comes up any higher than, than that, that drainpipe, it runs all over our property, 'cause it's, our poverty is very low. I'm very concerned. You, you guys are just, you put blacktop down there, that's beautiful, but blacktop doesn't absorb water at all. For some reason, it runs off, and I bet, that my boots, that the runoff is up on the northern edge of that property. If it is, you'll have a guy here, coming in here in waiters and chewing you guys out for letting it happen. You, I'd be, whoever works on, on the drains in, in Warminster is not doing a great job. The whole length of the road down, down from York Road, all the way down to our property is four-hundred yards, and there's one bloody drain there. That's the only one that takes, takes water. It's very badly managed and organized, and I'm telling you, you're right on the brink. It was, I have been trying to get mad and everything. I'll start pouring bloody great buckets of water over your driveway. See how you like it. I'm telling you, we have a maximum amount of water coming into, into and across our property right now, and no more will be allowed. Otherwise, you'll be getting visits from a guy at night, dropping bloody great buckets of water over your driveway. See how you like it. It's got to be addressed. And right now, before that monstrosity gets in, the beam lays down all that blacktop and starts water running off, and the water will run off in our direction. Our backyard is twelve feet below the northern edge of that property. Twelve feet of rough, 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 you know, it's trees and stuff, but it's the, 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 the layer, the layer of the land is such that it just runs off that way. And I'd like to be nice about it, but I have a, I have an opinion and a suspicion that I will be nasty if that bloody water starts running in my back door. That's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Dave Gillington. I live at nine-eight-one Mueller Road. I live right on the corner, the back corner of Yorktown Village Department. And I can tell you that the big subject here is drainage, and it's water. When I moved in, my mother lived in that house, and she never had it done, and she had, her basement was flooded, I can't tell you how many times. When I moved in the house, we spent about four thousand dollars for French drains to go all the way around the basement and the crawl space. The water situation back there starts a lot further this way than behind that property. On a good rain, you can't walk in my backyard, all the way down that back property fence line, you can't walk. It's just a swamp. So I know that that water just flows. It's just a flow of water. I heard somebody make a statement tonight about lots and lots of trees. Well, you're taking down lots and lots of trees. I, I put a ten-by-twelve patio in my backyard. To get that permit, I had to plant two trees in my backyard, because we're on a watershed. That's what I was told. That's a lot bigger piece of property, and you're taking a lot more trees down. Those trees help absorb the water. It's the only thing we've got that helps. You're taking them away. And there's not enough trees around that property line. I don't care how many you plant there. There's not enough trees in that property line that are gonna take the place of the ones you're taking down to put that piece of property up. You also said you have an ordinance on lighting. Well, I can tell you the light in the back of that Yorktown Village is so bright at night, it's, it's ridiculous. It's just a huge, huge flood, and it just takes the whole backyard of Yorktown, and it comes over in my backyard. So, there's a lot of things being said tonight, but a lot of them aren't making sense. And, you know, there's about four houses or five houses that have the same concern, not quite as much as his. But I know for a fact that we were going back to that property one time, and you couldn't walk. It's a flood. The whole thing is a flood plain, and there's nowhere for the water to go. I don't care what you try to do back there. You're not gonna defer all that water. So it's, it's a huge issue. So it's, it's a huge issue.
Amanda, can you add one slide, please?
Everything you said is, everything you said about existing conditions is correct. Yorktown Village is this community. It has no stormwater management. Law College is this community. It has no stormwater management. You folks live in this community. You have no stormwater management. Ivyland Road has no stormwater management, okay?
This is going to be the first project that installs stormwater management to slow the water down. We will improve the situation. Will we fix the situation 100%? I don't know. I won't promise that. I will promise you that we will improve the situation. We can drop inlets in this location, grab the water, bring it into our community, into our stormwater basins, and then discharge it. We can slow that water down. There are things that we can do. I know everyone here, not everyone here, but a lot of people here are concerned about the stormwater and the drainage. That's, that's a few meetings from now. That's the next two or three meetings. We talk about that in the public. I can, we can also have a staff meeting in the evening and bring all the community in, and we lay our plans down and show you what we're proposing to do. We can do that in the next couple of months, if that's what the residents want and that's what the township wants. We just don't have those plans designed yet, but I'll be excited to show them to you. I have this meeting every time I bring a new project in. I have a group of homeowners, every single time, saying that they have tremendous stormwater problems and that we're going to make it worse. And we always make it better.
I will add, same thing with the lighting. That lighting ordinance that was referenced does not apply to Fox Run. Now, if there's an existing problem, that should go to LNI Department. That happens all the time in every township. But the lighting ordinance is what I'll enforce, they'll have to design to for any new lighting. There's light pollution, there's stormwater runoff, there's trees that are taken down, that every project, it's the same issues. We've left out traffic tonight, but actually, I think they're going to make some.
Thanks a lot.
We'll get there, sorry. Well, to be honest with you, they're way ahead of that, and I appreciate that, because that makes my life a lot easier. Yeah, we, that's, that's PennDOT's complete jurisdiction on that. And I know they're going to have to dance through, through some hoops to satisfy PennDOT. But any existing conditions, please report to LNI. The staff will look at it. That's separate from what they, the requirements that they have to meet, okay?
Manny, I think you probably go to the next slide.
How's it going? Liz Warnash, I'm in Law College Manor. So my mom drug me here tonight, by the way. So speaking of traffic, what are you going to do?
Our proposal is to have two access points. There's a signalized intersection at Norristown Road and York Road. We're going to revise that signal so that it's a four-leg intersection right there. We're going to retime that signal for better operations. And then there'll be a second access point along York Road at the location a little further to the south.
A little further to the south. Isn't there already one there?
The property's vacant right now.
Okay. Is it going to be a left-turn signal onto Norristown? You're going to put that in, or?
There's an existing traffic signal at Norristown, yes. And there will be phased movements allowed. We're working on the traffic study right now.
Okay. And then I guess my next question's for the board. I've heard it a couple of times tonight. Why do we feel this development is needed, per se?
I can answer. We have, we need affordable housing for 55-plus. There is a need for it, because we have a lot of elderly residents in, in Marmester. So we have Anne's Choice. So a lot of folks can't afford to live there, and this will be more affordable to, to some of the 55-plus.
Okay. What, do you guys have a rough estimate of average cost of unit?
The Caddis gentlemen here, they can answer those questions. They're out of Dallas, Texas. They're a national company, goes around the country looking for these locations. They've chosen Marmester Township to, to invest in, because they're in such a need here with our aging population. Anne's Choice is, is virtually full with a waiting list. And this is a step lower on the economic scale for more people to afford. That's correct. So any questions about their operations? I'd have to bring up one of the Caddis gentlemen.
Okay. Okay.
Kev, back to, back to traffic real quick. Are you putting a decel lane in up to that traffic light? Didn't one of the plans call for a decel lane?
We are working on that right now. I, I'm going to have to get back to you on that, Mark. I'm not sure. We're going back and forth with PennDOT. The traffic study's been submitted to them, and they're starting to talk about auxiliary lanes now.
So they, they may require you to do it.
It's going to be their jurisdiction. It's all about, you know, warrants with the traffic through there, and I'll be able to report back.
We may see that on a future plan.
Correct.
Can you say what, what is that?
The decel lane.
Deceleration.
Make that right in.
Gotcha.
Any other questions from the public? The plan itself?
There you go.
I'm sure that. Any questions from the board?
Somebody else wants to?
Jim.
Oh, it looks like we have another question.
Jim Boyle, 368 Bloomfield Road. Good evening, guys.
Hey, Jim.
My question's about the zoning. This is an overlay that'll be only applied to this part, these parcels, is that correct?
That's right.
Will this, if another developer wants to go to another location, say like the Acme, Davisville Shopping Center, can they apply for this overlay to go, or will they have to like get a new one designed for their plans?
Any property owner can ask for any zoning change that they want. It's, it's within the discretion of this board to determine what zoning is appropriate for the property.
Right, but will this be like something in the books, so as far as to make it by right? It has to hit those certain things that you mentioned that makes this by right?
In other words, they can't use, take this, this ordinance to take it to another property?
Right.
Right. No.
Okay, all right. And why an overlay not just a complete changing of the zoning? Because I know we have a lot, a few other 55, like assisted living facilities, just the one in Jacksonville next, near the, the condos. I know it's a commercial area, but I don't know, why, why overlaying not just a complete change of the?
I guess we would be receptive if property owners came to us and wanted to do a similar proposal. We would look at that the same as we did here at this. At the moment, there's not a need. We have one applicant that's interested. So rather than expand the existing zoning to other areas and, and open up that box, we'll just limit it to this particular area. But certainly, we could have discussions in the future.
So like having your overlay, you can keep that overlay to that area?
This overlay is, is only for these three parcels.
Right. But you couldn't switch it to, say, institutional or similar or commercial for that zone instead of doing it? Wouldn't that give you any more control instead of being a by right? I think Brian said you're playing a card, you're playing a card with this overlay where you can get concessions.
It would give you, I'm not sure it would give you more control. So if you change the zoning, anything, so if you change it to industrial, anything that's industrial would be allowed by right. And that's not necessarily what we'd want in that corridor. So that's why it's tailored specifically for this kind of project.
Could I ask Judy to weigh in here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason for doing an overlay really preserves the rights of the property owner. So that property retains all the rights of the underlying district, which is R2, so that the overlay comes into play only if the owner or the applicant, equivalent of the property, wants to use those provisions, which would provide for then the residential or the retirement community. But if that is not opted for, or something happens down the road and it's not used, the properties retain the rights of the underlying district, R2. If you just changed it to a retirement community, the only option in that district, the way this is written, would be a retirement community.
Okay, so it can be either retirement community or, or single-family homes under this arrangement.
Imagine flipping a switch. If someone makes the option to use it, and it's in one of these three parcels and has all the requirements, then you can use it. But if the switch is flipped off, and at some point this applicant doesn't go through, or a future one doesn't, those properties retain the R2 zoning as individual parcels right now.
Right.
That, that last part is key. I was going to actually, I agree with Judy. The, they're not, this is a zoning overlay. If they're, start working a project, and all of a sudden DEP's going to get involved, or PennDOT comes back and asks for $3 million worth of improvements, they, they can walk, as so to speak, as Judy said. They, we may not be dealing with them. There may be someone else sitting there. But someone else may just come in and say, "Hey, I just want to build some single-family homes. I don't have the money or the investment to do this." And that preserves that right to the original property owners, which actually is sitting in front of you. But the big part of this project is Caddis and the, you know, that part. But there's other projects that come in, and we don't see them come back. I mean, there's some that are sitting here approved, and you haven't seen them yet. Several properties that we get asked about. So this preserves the, the, the underlying right of the, to utilize that zoning district. It can be done either way, but this provides more flexibility.
Actually, I have a, I have a question on, on top of that. So if, not that you guys would ever walk away. But if we approve this overlay, and then for whatever reason, the partners change where they weren't as cooperative as the, our, our team over here, do we have it within our right to then rescind the overlay? If, if, if we were worried about future considerations?
The answer is yes. I mean, the property can always be rezoned. You know, an overlay can be removed. However, once the overlay is granted, then once the land development plan is submitted, you know, there, those rights are vested. So it, it's all a matter of timing. But if, if ultimately something were to happen, and unfortunately, this team couldn't move forward, you know, this board could always revisit that before a new application is submitted.
And just to clarify, just by giving the overlay to this particular project, it's not setting a precedent in the township for additional land developments?
That's right. That's correct.
All right, just so, want folks to know that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? From the board? So seeing none, I guess we'll close the meeting, or the hearing at this point. And, Mr. Chairman, I guess it's appropriate at this time to entertain a motion to act on, approve, or deny the ordinance as proposed.
Okay. So do we have a motion on the proposal? Whether, do we have a motion to approve the adoption of ordinance 751 Retirement Community Zoning Overlay Ordinance?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Discussion from the board?
I mean, I, I, I like the players. I mean, I think we were, I mean, the first thing was, you know, to go through zoning or do the overlay, and I think we're pretty much, we're okay with the overlay. And I do like everything that you guys have brought to the table. I still have a couple of issues, but you guys are, have been good partners in the past, so.
I, I agree with Mr. Monroe. You've been excellent partners in our community, easy to work with. I do have a couple of concerns that I did express to you, and so those are my reservations. But I, I do appreciate the relationship between you and Marmester. Thank you.
I'll just say that, I mean, this is a big project, one that is going to be a significant investment in this community. And I think it helps a great deal that Caddis chose to work with county builders, because I do trust in county builders to deliver on their promises, everything that's been said here tonight. And that's, that's a credit to county builders, because you've delivered on the other promises. So thank you. Before I call the question, any comment from the public? Any questions from the public?
We'll definitely be notified for another meeting for, like, the residents that.
I, I mean, I think it's the intent of this board, that this process be very public and that, that people be notified. The, the notification typically would be through, how would we notify? Like, it's not like we're sending letters on this.
Depending how far away they live from the.
Right. How does that work? I don't want to overpromise right now.
I, I think the, the best way to start is everyone here, if you can give your name and contact information to, to Amanda, we'll start a distribution list and, and keep that going, to keep everyone in, in the loop of when these meetings are occurring.
From this point forward, it's a land development application. We'll get into all the details and all that. But it's not a zoning, there'll be no notifications out, no official notifications. But Amanda will be the one. And then, again, as you get questions or concerns, Amanda relays that to staff, and we try to help you with that process as well.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Motion carries 3-2.
Thanks very much. Port seen to soon.
Thank you, Ed.
Just give everybody a moment.
Ed, get the worst of my regards, huh? Thank you.
Oh, you lost. Either you or Amanda.
There's so many.
Thank you. No, I know. I said I was giving everybody a moment. All right, guys, we're going to get going again here. Next up is public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items. It's subject to a five-minute guideline, but we're pretty lenient. So any public comment this evening on non-agenda items? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Welsh. I'm on Hollowell Avenue, Marmester. I just wanted to inform the board, we're talking about the stormwater. We had a major problem with stormwater runoff in our neighborhood on Mason Avenue. Three or four residents, we had almost three, four foot of water. We actually had a lake behind these homes. And the residents asked for a meeting with Mr. Schuster. We came over and had a meeting with him and explained to him our situation and what we had going on back there. The next day, he had Eric from Public Works come over and assess the issue. Within a few days, Eric had a crew out there to alleviate the problem. The way our runoff is supposed to work is the water runs down Hollowell Avenue and Mason Avenue, and it's supposed to get over to the Whittaker Basin. For some reason, this water wasn't getting over there. We had a lake probably about three weeks, but the water wasn't moving. So Eric came over and assessed the issue. And like I said, in a couple of days, he had a crew over there trying to alleviate the problem. He, he was actually getting pretty frustrated, because he couldn't get the water to move. It took him two weeks to get that water to move from Mason over to the Whittaker Basin. So right now, he has a temporary fix on it. But he's going to come back in the spring, when the weather permits, to try to finalize the problem to make the water move over to the Whittaker Basin. But I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Schuster for a fine job he has done so far to get Public Works over there. I wanted to let the board know that, that I appreciate the services that the board does give Marmester.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Our Public Works guys do great work. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's consent agenda is fairly brief. Item A is approval of your minutes for the December 20th, 2018 meeting. Item B, your minutes for the January 7th, 2019 reorganization meeting. Item C is approval of a PA one-call proclamation, this is an annual request we get, to designate April as Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month. And as always, we encourage everyone to call before you dig. You don't necessarily know what's in the ground, and you definitely don't want to hit something by accident. It causes a lot of problems and a lot of damage. And item D is pressure technology, release number one, the final, from their escrow account in the amount of $107,203.80, as recommended by the engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
The second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, call question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Carries 5-0. Okay. Moving on to financial report. I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. McKee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve December's transfers and approve the bill list dated January 17, 2019 in the amount of $1,398,555.53.
Is a motion on the, is there a second?
I'll say.
Any comment? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Carries 5-0. Thank you. December financial statement, Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the December financial report. I'd like to caution the board that these numbers. I'd like to caution the board that these numbers are unaudited. And additionally, we do expect some fluctuation. We are still receiving last-minute bills and revenues that are coming in. However, as things stand right now in the general fund, the current deficit for 2018 is approximately $1.4 million. So it's less than what was originally budgeted, but still significant. A couple of things I'll note on the revenues. Earned income tax was actually lower than the previous year. I found that fairly interesting. We're trying to get more information on that. I had thought that with the strong jobs market that we would have seen an uptick there, but it was actually down. Likewise, business privilege tax was also lower than last year. We did expect that a little bit, because we had hired a firm to come in and do a lot of delinquent collections, but it was down by about $200,000. So we're trying to get more information on that as well. And as I reported at a previous meeting, the cable franchise fees continue to decrease as more and more people cut the cable and go really with internet service. Of course, the final numbers will come out in the financial statements for the 2018 audit, which should be underway shortly.
So judging from what I read, we are, we are basically at a $1.4 million deficit for 2018?
Approximately right now. That number is going to fluctuate, not by much, but it'll be right about there.
So we'll have, when the audit's complete, you'll have some type of actual number on our fund balance? Because we're, obviously, we're going to have to start keeping an eye on that now.
Yes.
Are the decreases, is that typical in other townships right now too? Have you, have you talked to other managers, or is this just something that's happening here?
You know, I can't answer that. I haven't looked around.
Okay. I was just curious.
I imagine that it can vary a great deal depending on the population and what's going on in the job market. But it's a good question, what I'll, when we do a research and we, we ask the company that collects it, we'll see if there's any other trends that we are.
I was just curious.
Hearing to, no, it's, it's a good question. I just don't know, but I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from Mr. Schuster? Thank you. Alright, we have no unfinished business, so next we're going to move on to new business. Under new business, our singular item is our volunteer firefighters' workers' compensation funding. Before I turn it over to Mr. Schuster, just want to say on this particular item, we had intended in the budget to transfer 0.23 mills to cover the increase in the workman's comp for the firefighters. In the, at the meeting on December 20th, when the tax increase did not occur, and it ended up being a zero tax increase, I did not notice that we did not make that transfer. We did not account for that. And I apologize to the, to our fire companies, the men and women of our fire companies. It was not my intent, no excuse. I forgot it. I just, in the moment, I didn't notice it. So tonight, we have this item on the agenda as hopefully a first step to rectifying that mistake. And it's obviously something that has to be paid to greater attention in the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You pretty much gave a summary that I would give. As you're aware, that increase in the millage was not completed. We had already budgeted in the fire fund the workers' compensation costs, which I do believe is the appropriate place for it in that fund, because it is entirely for the volunteer firefighters. However, by not increasing the millage, it does create a shortfall by about $75,000, which would have eaten into the direct assistance given to the two fire companies. What the proposal is tonight is to say that we will hold them whole. We will get that funding back in there, so that they stay at the same level of direct assistance. Ordinarily, this would be done through a budget transfer, a budget amendment. However, per the second-class township code, you can't do a budget amendment until three months have passed in the fiscal year. So what this action is, is simply say that we will continue to fund them. However, we also follow up in, in April, or shortly thereafter, with an appropriate budget amendment that would move the money over from the general fund to the fire fund.
I'm glad we're going to do that. I'm sorry for the oversight too. We all are.
Well, the, the simple question I have is, is that we decline to raise the millage to the fire fund, 2019, correct? So this money's going to come out of fund balance.
Correct.
What are we going to do next year? Because our fund balance is going to be pretty much depleted by the end of this year.
To my, I would agree that we'd have to raise taxes at least to cover that at the minimum.
We should have done it this year.
I agree. We should have put that in there. We missed it, and I, I said that piece. So, I don't disagree with you, Mr. McKee, on that point.
Well, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Chair, and I agree with him completely.
Any other comment from the board?
I agree completely with Mr. Crowley also.
Any, well, I guess we should put a motion up first, right?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend a motion to increase the township contribution in 2019 to both the Hartsville Fire Company and the Warmaster Fire Department to the same level as previous years and propose a budget amendment in April 2019, which will authorize a transfer from the general fund to the fire fund to support this.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment from the board? Any comment from the public?
I need a cook out of the lane. So we're going to, believe me, I was raised in the house of firefighters, so I agree you guys need everything that you can get. So, they not only didn't get any extra money to work off of, they didn't get this money. Is that what I understand? Like, their budget stayed the same? They didn't get any increase in their budget? And then, we nicked them for 75 grand on top of it? Is that pretty much what happened?
Well, I'm talking about the direct assistance. There are other things. For instance, we get foreign insurance money that comes through, and that's a pass-through. So we don't control that, and it actually has been declining over the years. So their, their, I would say that their budgets, or the amount of assistance they've been getting overall, has actually been declining from other sources. It's been relatively steady from the township, but I think what you're saying i- is accurate, that we were not incre, you know, we were never increasing them. They just didn't get that additional $75,000.
I mean, I don't want to put myself further in all, but shouldn't we be increasing it? I mean, not just taking care of this, because this is our obligation to do this, because it's the right thing to do. It's the moral thing to do. But how come we're not increasing? I mean, I understand that, you know, the budget, we didn't increase it, and we didn't, the mills didn't go up, but why wouldn't that have been something we looked at, especially for next year? When we go to the budget for next year? I mean, if they're getting less from public donations and from insurance payments, we have to make up the difference somewhere. We cannot ha, not have a viable firefighting force in our township. So I would hope that next year, when the budget comes around and we do increase it, that we look to increase this as well, because they deserve it. And the, the trucks are only getting older, and the firefighters are only getting older, you know, those guys.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Schuster. We moved the obligation of workers' comp for our firefighters over to the fire fund, to the...
Correct.
To make it responsible to the fire company, yet we declined to increase the millage to pay for it. So that's why we're doing this transfer. To answer your question.
Okay, and so, but our budget, when we moved it over, the township budget remained the same in that, in that bucket of the township budget. Is that correct? So where did the difference go? Am I, am I talking English here?
Oh, okay, so I, so what we did is, we took $75,000 out of the general fund and moved that cost over to the fire fund.
Right, but when you were doing the budget, and you reduced our budget by $75,000?
Yes.
Is that part of that cost-cutting measures that we did, or is that 75 being used for something else?
Well, so the budget I proposed had the 75,000 moved over to the fire fund, and then had a millage rate on the general fund, which would support everything in the general fund, and a millage rate in the fire fund, which would support everything in the, in the fire fund.
So how, our general fund's really going to get cranked for this, isn't it? I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and so what are we going to do about that?
Well, yeah, that's a couple of questions. So first of all, in terms of any kind of taxation, I mean, that's, that's done for 2019. There's nothing we can do.
Right.
I, I don't have an answer as to what the long-term plans are. Obviously, we're going to have to have some discussions. In terms of what you were talking about earlier, with the fire companies and the funding levels, one thing we're doing right now is we are having a fire study conducted. We did hire a professional outfit to come out. I know all board members sat with them. They've been working with the fire companies, and we're anxious to hear those reports. I mean, there's a lot of issues when it comes to the fire companies. You're correct. You have aging materials, or aging equipment. You have volunteerism, which is on the decline, not just at Warmaster, but...
Everywhere.
Everywhere. It's a, it's a big problem. And yes, at the end of the day, we're going to have to go ahead and work with the fire companies to...
We have to step up and support them. I mean, we're, we're trying to get our budget together, because we have an obligation to the police officers that have put their lives on the line every day for us, but so do these men and women, and we need to back them.
I, I agree, Anita. I got chewed out by, by Chief Godshaw back in the fall, and I, I heard you loud and clear, chief.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Carries five oh. Thank you. Okay, moving on now. Professionals' reports. First up, township manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all have my written report in case you have any questions. Two things I'll talk about. One is, winter weather appears to be on the way. Don't really expect a city event overnight, but this weekend could be a city event. Depending who you talk to, it could be rain, it could be ice, it could be snow. So I urge everyone to monitor that. We will make a decision at the appropriate time whether to issue a snow emergency or not, and of course, Public Works will be out working the roads as needed. The other thing I'd like to talk about briefly is trash and recycling. I know we've been getting a lot of questions about when those toters are going to arrive. When we went through the bidding process, because of the timing of the process, the feedback we got from the bidders was there was not enough time to deliver the toters for a January 1 start date. So we, we asked them, 60 days from time of award seemed acceptable. So when we did the agreement with Mascaro, who was the awarded bidder, we put in the agreement January 26, 2019, as when the toters were going to be delivered. Mascaro informed us that they were not going to be able to deliver on January 26. They are hoping, and it looks like they're on schedule, to start delivering the toters in pieces to our Public Works yard, where they're going to be assembled and distributed throughout the month of February. We, of course, had concerns over this because of what the contract says. Mascaro, through discussions with, with attorneys, has agreed in compensation for that late delivery of the toters to add an additional recycling run, any year that it's necessary during the holidays. If you recall, there are some days that recycling would go three weeks without pickup. The Christmas and New Years, if they fall on a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday, you'll always have that three-week gap. So what they're going to do is put an extra run in on those years when that happens, so that gap doesn't occur. So, I think we will get the toters a little bit later than we wanted, but it does solve another problem. I think that was a, a good solution. Additionally, I did decide to have a Facebook Live session tomorrow at 2:00 PM.
I'm afraid I'm going to have to call the abuse managers hotline.
It's to take any questions or comments on, on the trash and recycling contract. I'm sure there would be plenty, but I thought it'd be good to just go ahead and, and answer the questions and let people get whatever it is out of their system.
Greg, I've been getting some phone calls. The letter went out from Mascaro to residents. And in the letter, it didn't say exactly how these bins are going to be delivered. Are they just dumping them in people's yards? People are going to know about it?
The, the, you're not going to have anyone come to your door. It's just going to be a curbside delivery. So one day, they're just going to show up.
Okay.
And they'll be there. Now, if you want to refuse them, which is your right, you can go ahead and refuse them. You should contact Mascaro. They will come and pick them up, and make a note that you have refused them. Of course, it doesn't change the rate that you're paying, but you do have that right.
Oh, okay. And what about the folks that live on County Line Road, that live on a hill? They're supposed to be putting their, their trash out by the street, but you can't really do that there.
Where do they put it now?
Well, it, it gets on the street. By the time the, the trash cans get, you know, thrown around and all that.
So we, we have residents who have...
We talked about that with the contract and stuff, about things on the street and all that. So, some folks were asking, like, what do I do? I live on a hill, on County Line Road.
Yeah, I mean, if there's anyone who, any individual that has those concerns. We do have some people with some very unique circumstances, and we have to be a little creative with Mascaro. You know, they should contact us, and we'll work with them on, on how to handle that.
And they can use their extra bins if they have extra?
Yes, up to six.
Extra, okay, okay. Those were the questions I had.
In other, in other, in other townships...
I was just going to say, we'll note that during the process of putting together the bid specs, we sought specifically the, the type of toters that would be most convenient when there's icy situations or when there's hills involved and things like that. So, it's never going to be perfect, but it's as good as we can get.
In other townships, you can put, you don't want to, but you can put them right behind the curb and the grass. Sometimes there is problems with cars parked or all that. As long as it's close, they still pick them up. And if they don't, then you know you're too far away, but people push the limits of how far away, because they park cars and stuff. But they still pick it up.
And then the only other thing, why didn't they mention that it was only going to cost us $27 a year? They put everything else in the letter. Okay, so those are questions you might be getting on your live interview.
That's, that's, that's...
That's it, okay.
Well, you know, by the way, on that note, I mean, I, I broke down on Facebook, someone said it, oh, they're so expensive and so on and so forth. I, I purchased one of a similar size. It was around $80. And if you're, if my math is correct, I mean, if it lasts six years, that's basically the, the amount that I personally paid in when I bought mine. So it's, so for that amount, I, I thought it was a pretty good deal when I broke it down. The two questions I have for you is the, the one concession that you just negotiated with respect to the extra pickup during the, the New Years and the holidays. Is that just, is that for the life of the contract?
Yes.
Fantastic. The other question I have, one of the questions I was given, was some of those homes that have, you know, could be 150 First Street, and it's got 1A, or A, B, and C. Do they each get one, or is that, like, are they rental? I'm not exactly sure how that works.
The easiest way to say it is, if you are paying a trash fee, you are entitled to your own bin.
Okay.
Most of those dwellings, they have their own individual ones.
Thank you.
But it would be, it would be property by property specific, but if you're paying your own individual fee, you have your own trash bins.
Any other questions for Mr. Schuster? First of all, you're, you're a brave man for doing that. I'll log on and laugh. But, you know, we get it, so you might as well too, right? My one question really is about snow emergency. If, if one should be declared over the weekend, just a quick reminder what we, what we're asking residents to do.
Sure. If a snow emergency is declared, we ask that you get your vehicle off the road by the time prescribed. We typically don't announce a snow emergency with seconds to spare. We'll tell you at noon that it's going to go into effect at 6 o'clock, so you, so you have some time. Also, with the foul weather coming, you should expect that. The reason why we do this is to have the roads clear, so that Public Works can do their job and clear the roads as quickly as possible. So that's the main effect of the snow emergency. Police would be out ticketing and towing as needed during a snow emergency. We hate to do it, but it's, it's, it's a critical function. It really causes a lot of issues when Public Works can't, or has to plow around cars. So we, we ask everyone to please cooperate. You know, likewise, this isn't necessarily a snow emergency thing, but just be mindful of what you might have near the roadway, especially if you have, you know, basketball, you know, portable basketball poles. You know, move those away from the roadway, so our Public Works trucks aren't striking them.
And is there a requirement, township requirement on what, how soon you have to shovel? Walkway or...
It was 24 hours after the end of the storm, yes.
Right, so, alright. Just want to remind everyone, because those are typically the big questions we'll get. Alright, thank you, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Solicitor's report. Mr. Ward?
We've submitted our report. Certainly, I can go into detail on any of the topics that the board would like, or answer any questions, but...
Any questions for Mr. Ward?
Great, great report.
Thank you.
Alright, last but not least, engineers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You saw, or most of you signed the Buck Bagels record plans. There is not a date yet for the pre-construction meeting, but Buck's Bagel project, that's been...
It's a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah, it's near the, the, right in front of the ice hockey rink. So they'll be, I assume, moving forward in the spring.
Are they, are they planning on staying open during the construction, or are they, like, do I have to stock up on my bagels?
I believe I was told they are going to try to stay open. But we'll see what happens. Once they start construction, it may change.
That was an engineering question, by the way. Two projects that planning commission are going to see, actually at their 22nd meeting, and hopefully you'll see in February, is the Wendy's at 813 County Line Road. That's the pad site that was approved. That's the pad site that was approved for a restaurant. That was part of the original County View Properties. The Hovnenian developments in the back. You had TD Bank and CVS along County Line Road. They're, got their zoning relief reviews are in, so I don't see any significant issue. Pretty short review. That project was already done. Stormwater's done. Everything, it was just basically a pad site sitting there, so not, not a lot of issues.
I did get a request from a few of the neighbors in, the ones that live behind the, the Amvets poster, the VFW there, regarding the red light. Horseshoe, or Upper Morland still controls that, right?
Yes.
Are you still in Upper Morland?
We're the township engineer, but I believe McMahon is the traffic
Is tra- okay. They, they, from what they were telling me, maybe they could be looked at while, when Wendy's is being done, they're telling me that the center lane going across County Line Road is basically worthless.
Okay.
That, that there can be some improvement made there for traffic flow, especially since there's probably going to be more traffic coming in there now.
What I would suggest is
And these are people that see it every day. They would know more than
Yeah, and that's fine, because it's basically a retime. This project doesn't require any traffic study, any of that stuff. However, during that meeting, what we can do is make that kind of part of the motion that I think the township staff should just contact the township manager there to have their traffic engineer look at it, and then what I'll do is, behind the scenes, I'll make sure that
That would be great, because like I said, these people see it every day. They would know more than
Yeah, okay. No, I agree. That happens quite a bit.
Yeah.
The other project
Thank you.
The other project you'll see is a three-lot subdivision at 710 Newtown Road, single-family homes. There's existing a house there. 710, what'd you say? Oh, just minor subdiv- or major subdivision, there's only two new lots, so two single-family homes. I don't know if they're going to sell those individually or someone, usually someone buys those and builds both of the homes, so pretty simple project again. We also are officially closing out 620 Jacksonville Road. That's a project that was started several years ago, Mission Barbecue, Chipotle, oh, I don't even remember, but, and the big thing was Chick-fil-A was part of that, which everybody's happy. So that project, they cleaned up their punchless items, and we are closing out that project. That's all I have. I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kennard? This doesn't, doesn't sound like there's a lot in the pipeline.
Not a lot. We are busy with the park project. I believe there's a presentation at your February meeting with that, so Karen McNair will be there. She's been working diligently with the Park and Rec staff, making changes. I believe Mr. Schuster is involved in all that. I've stepped away a little bit. But yeah, they'll be here next for that stormwater. That's obviously being transferred over, but that's kind of coming to a conclusion. And your park, or your Public Works facility, or staff, crew, they're doing a great job. I constantly hear feedback from my staff on how great Eric and the guys are doing there. So we hear that through the developers. I mean, we get a lot of, a lot of complaints about the road program or, you know, paving my road. Sometimes it comes through us, but they're doing an excellent job. I get a lot of positive feedback.
Biggie back on that. Thank you, Mr. Kennard, for your report. I have residents that, that really praise Eric Hines and his crew, because folks will call if there's a problem on the street, and I know you had mentioned it during some of the meetings, and he had mentioned it, too. He said he comes right out, assesses the situation, takes care of it, and people are very pleased with the service, so thank you.
You know, here eleven years now, the change from eleven years ago to now with, with how the road program's done, which is Public Works drainage complaints, I mean, I used to always get the calls. I'd have to stop what I'm doing, I had someone out there. That's a charge to the township. That's out of your general fund. I mean, I know some of you, some of you have seen those bills from, from years ago. That has drastically dropped off, and it's a cost savings to the taxpayers here that you have a quality staff that can jump on it. They pull us in as needed instead of us being out in the front. Now, the township staff is out in the front. That is a big change that you don't, not everybody's going to notice that, but I know Mr. Schuster sees it in the, in the bills every month.
I notice.
I know you notice.
This isn't necessarily for you, but I mean, since we're on a couple of different items, this stormwater issue that was at Norristown by, what is that? Laverne? Laverne, I forget the side street. Anyway, by the Willow, the Willowdale School, drastically improved. They did a phenomenal job. They really did. I've been, I was watching them for weeks out there, you know, moving the rocks and all that kind of stuff, getting, getting their, getting dirty.
The drainage swale?
Yeah. It's drastically
It wasn't easy.
What's that?
It wasn't an easy fix, however. It took a while.
Well, I drove by them pretty much every day, and, and like I said, you can see I'm hard at work. It was fantastic.
Thanks for not calling.
Thank you, Mr. Kennard. Okay, we'll move on to Township Manager announcement of upcoming agenda items. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ordinarily, we would cancel the first meeting of the month, but that is not going to go
February.
I'm sorry?
February.
For February. That's not going to occur in February, so there will be a meeting on February 7th. Mr. Kennard talked about the Warmminster Community Park project. We believe we'll have that on the agenda for a presentation about where we stand. We were hoping to actually have it tonight. We had to postpone it as we do some last-minute rearranging with the grants and making sure we're maximizing our dollars. Also, I'd be in a position at that point to report back to you on the potential RFP for a financial consultant through the DCD Early Intervention Program. We're actually meeting with DCD tomorrow and getting that information, so that'll, that information will be on your agenda on February 7th for consideration. As I reported to you via email, the Budget Committee met, did not make any recommendations at this time. However, the February 7th meeting will have two financial items on there. One is, we do have a proposal to value the golf course. That'll be on the agenda for your consideration, as well as a presentation and proposal from PFM, which we have seen previously, to value the water and sewer systems.
So they're, they could possibly be on our agenda for February 7th to take action to have the water authority and sewer system appraised?
Yes.
Correct, just because the fellows are in the room tonight, just to make it clear for them.
Any other questions for Mr. Schuster? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now at the second round of public comment. Residents have another opportunity to comment on any items. Is there anybody for a second round of public comment?
Evening once again. Bob Welsh, Challowell Avenue. I have a question on snow removal. Is that all Public Works, or do we have Public, do we have contractors that are doing that also?
Plowing?
Plowing.
Yeah, we, we have Public Works and contractors.
And do they have specific areas that they're working in?
Yes.
Okay.
Please don't ask me which ones. I don't know off the top of my head. But I can get you that information if you want.
Okay.
I can tell you that the heights is done by, via contractors. There's a, a unique arrangement over there that really started with a court order, so they have a contractor, which we reimburse them for. I know that area is definitely done by a contractor. The other areas, I'm, I'm not exactly sure which is done by Public Works or contractor, but I could get that information.
Is there a certain snow mount before they have to come out? Is there
No, it's a judgment called by Public Works. The director makes the call on, on when they would come out. And it's also if they anticipate a storm, they're all, you know, treating the roads prior to the snow falling anyways.
Yeah, I noticed we don't do the brine anymore.
No, you know, we discontinued that a couple of years ago. It was the belief of Public Works, and I concur, that the brine was not effective. What the brine was actually more effective at was adhering to your car and rotting it out.
Reckon my catalytic converter.
Corrosive.
Yeah, it's very corrosive, and after you lay it down, it just gets washed away and on the undercarriage, so the, the treatment of salt is, is what we preferred. So we've, we've gone away from, from brine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to Supervisors' comments. Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just be careful over the weekend, as Mr. Schuster indicated, it's going to be a mess. Hopefully, the ice stays away. I did want to make, I guess, kind of one announcement and talk about this a little bit. There's, so I think there's a pretty significant Civil War reenactment that's coming to the community park. Has that been
Yes.
Like, is that official now?
Yes.
Coming in May?
Yeah, I don't know the exact date, but I
I have, well, I have it, I just, I don't know if it was 100% confirmed, but
I haven't been told it's official, but you know
It is.